Welcome everyone to the May Council meeting. We'll start the meeting with a moment of silence, please. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call chief, Councilwoman Kobe.
Present.
Councilman Varys.
Here.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Here.
Councilman Katina.
Here.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Here.
President of the loss.
Here.
Mayor Kavistic.
Here.
All present. At this time we'll call for public comments on any of the motions that are listed in the agenda, public comments on the listed motions, please.
All I want to say at the present time is while I was out in the Bible Saturday, I've run across some of our Carnegie citizens cleaning up and I want to commend them for that.
Thank you Leo.
They ought to come up to Dog Patch Hill up there. After they screw the clothes, make a couple of room. In the ladies' van is over there three hours of things, you know, you drink in and you fly for three hours. I've never seen anybody flying yet. The rock's off pretty low.
Any other public comments on listed motions? Thank you. At this time we have a presentation. Mayor.
Can I ask Sergeant Lee to come up, please? As everyone knows, we've had quite a month and I'll discuss that more later, but Sergeant Lee did an excellent job during that tragic incident where we had the shooting at Carnegie Towers. And to start this meeting off, I'd like to give her a letter of commendation. The chief and I have comprised this letter and I will read it to you right now. On April 14th, 2012, you responded to the scene of a shooting where there were multiple victims, including a two-week-old infant. Upon your arrival, you immediately began to give aid to the critically wounded victims while at the same time assessing a fluid situation that had developed into multiple crime scenes. While caring for the victims, you simultaneously began to direct the responding assisting officers to locations where they were most needed to establish and maintain the integrity of the crime scenes and protect evidence. After medical help arrived to care for the victims, you returned to the scene of the shootings where you continued to direct officers and personally supervised in the retrieval of valuable camera evidence that assisted in identifying the shooter. Your professionalism, knowledge, experience, and command presence in a highly volatile situation are in keeping with the highest traditions of the Carnegie Police Department and are to be commended. Sergeant Lee, thank you for your actions.
Unfortunately, that is the second time this year where she's had to handle a serious crime scene and it's the second time this year that she has done an excellent job. So, once again, thank you very much Sergeant Lee. At this time I'd like to invite Karen Rock to come up and to speak on a proposal that she has from the Community Life Committee of the Carnegie Business District.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the Downtown Carnegie Business District Advisory Committee. We are in the process of planning an event which we call Jazz Log III that will be held on Sunday, July 15th of this year. It will be held right outside of Third Street Gallery. We plan to block off Third Avenue from Third Street right before Tom Snyder's gas station. We are, as I said, we're going to block off the area, we intend to have a stage, we have several performers lined up. Etta Cox and Eldow have committed in a group soiree where we are going to have other performers. It will take place from approximately 2:00 in the afternoon until probably about 7:00 or 8:00 in the evening. We will be encouraging, we will provide tables and chairs and we are encouraging residents from the community to bring picnic baskets and, as I mentioned, they can bring their own bottle of wine if they wish. We feel that it will have a low impact on the businesses in Carnegie in that the streets will not, it will only be one small street blocked off. We are requesting $3,500 to fund this. That would cover the cost of the performers, the tent rental, the stage rental, we need the sound system, there will be other expenses that will need to be covered and we're requesting the $3,500 for that event. And Lee, the lead one will be here to speak a little bit more on BDAC and different things that are planned for the community through the Allegheny Together and the Business District.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone. I think as most people know Carnegie was named an Allegheny Together community, which is Allegheny County's Main Street program. And we were brought into that program about a year ago and spent some time doing some meetings, learning about community needs and interests. And then in the fall of last year, we developed four committees that are working on a variety of different aspects of downtown business district revitalization. And so I came tonight just to give a real quick update. The event that Karen was talking about is something that one of those committees is working on. The first committee is organization. The organization committee is responsible for doing grant writing, working to recruit volunteers to help on a variety of committees, serving as liaison with some of the consultants of the program, which include Pittsburgh History and Landmarks, working with Allegheny County Economic Development to identify potential funding sources for projects, and working with Town Center Associates, who is our main consultant on the program. The Architecture and Design Committee is working on facade improvements and renovations. As part of Allegheny Together, there is an additional facade program outside the realm of the Carnegie Community Development Corporation one. We are hoping to see potentially three facades funded through that program this year through the county and then hopefully additional ones that would be funded through the CCDC as well. One of the large projects that that committee is hoping to work on over the next several years is a wayfinding system for the community, which would include placemaking signs, signs to welcome you into Carnegie, and then additionally signs to direct you to the Central Business District, to some of our community assets like the Borough Building, the Library, Post Office, things along those lines. The Pittsburgh History and Landmarks Foundation is going to do the legwork for that. They're actually going to work on developing the best possible plan for where the signage could be placed in the community. They've already begun work on that and we expect probably sometime this summer to have a complete plan from them, an idea of where signs should go. And then they're also going to help us with the design phase and what signage could look like, things along those lines. And then we'll be moving forward to find funding to hopefully build the signs and place the signs. Business development, this is one of those areas where we kind of, a lot of the work with CCDC intersects. We are going to begin the process of visiting all of the businesses in Carnegie. Town Center Associates has actually already done that once and so probably this fall, members of this committee will do so. The goal was to meet with eight potential new or expanding businesses for 2012. That was for the entire year. At this point, we've met with at least nine, the numbers continue to grow. We're, I think we are all starting to see a lot of really good growth and development with new businesses coming into the community. Additionally, we've also been meeting with supporting groups, groups like the Small Business Association, the Senior Corps of Retired Executives, the Small Business Development Centers that are located, to tell them a little bit about the different resources that are available in the Borough of Carnegie for new businesses to come into the community. For those of you who don't know, the CCDC does have a business attraction grant program where we can provide up to 25% of the total project costs with a maximum grant of $50,000 for any new or expanding businesses in the community, in addition to a facade program where the CCDC will provide a matching grant of $10,000 to do exterior facade renovations. Just to date, so people are aware. Although the grant that we provided to CBS was not actually part of the business attraction grant program, we've provided a grant to CBS which was somewhat of a pilot of that program, a grant to Bob's Diner, a grant to Work Well, and a grant to Precious Angels, a grant to Plus Consulting, and a grant to Cafe Deli. From those grants, at this point in time, we expect by this time next year to see at a minimum probably 150 new employees in the Borough, of which at least 60 to 70 of those are full-time, full-benefit employees. So, for a town of our size, that's pretty excellent numbers, that's good, good growth with the new businesses. The last committee, which is the Community Life Committee, is working on a variety of things. Karen just told you about the Third Street Jazz event on Saturday, July 5th. Additionally, the committee received a grant from Allegheny County Health Department for $4,000 to do a Get Winded Wednesdays program, which will be a walking program. Through that program, we're going to be developing brochures that have a variety of walking and running paths and a biking mats. The group will hopefully meet and walk together. We believe that'll be starting the Wednesday following Memorial Day and will run through Labor Day. Anybody who logs certain numbers of miles will receive incentives, including coupon books for local restaurants in the community. The group plans to eat lunch together after the walk. We hope that's a good way to encourage health and also patronage our local businesses. And that group is also taking a look at planning a wine and cheesecake walk for December, which would coincide with the holidays, encouraging people to patronize their local businesses. And then lastly, there is a business mixer planned for May 30th at the Third Street Gallery from 5:00 to 7:00 PM and we would certainly invite any current businesses or new businesses to please attend. So, sorry that was lengthy, but the committee's been busy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of good things happening in there. Chief, let's get into the motions.
Motion to Administration and Finance, motion to approve the minutes from the council meeting on April 9th, 2012.
Sergeant. Questions or comments on the minutes? No questions? Chief roll call vote, please. Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the May bill list and addendum.
Second. Chief roll call, please. Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
President of the loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to offer part-time seasonal health employment to Scott Farmer at a pay rate of $10 per hour pending successful results of a physical examination and drug alcohol screen.
Second. Chief roll call. Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
President of the loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to offer part-time seasonal health employment to Michael Thomas at a pay rate of $9 per hour pending successful results of a physical examination and drug alcohol screen.
Second. Questions or comments? Roll call. Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to offer part-time seasonal health employment to David D'Ollo at a pay rate of $9 per hour pending successful results of a physical examination and drug alcohol screen.
Second. Questions? Roll call. Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
President of the loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to offer part-time seasonal health employment to Michael Coman at a pay rate of $9 per hour pending successful results of a physical examination and drug alcohol screen.
Second. Question? Roll call. Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
President of the loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to enter into an agreement with the Jordan Tax Service to conduct sewage drainage collection services for the Borough of Carnegie.
Second. Roll call. Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the loss.
Yes.
Motion passes. Councilwoman Kobe, please.
Thank you, President of the loss. Code enforcement. Motion to approve a curb cut at 523 Halton Street.
Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to deny a curb cut at 703 Washington Avenue.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to deny a request to operate an outdoor cafe at 146 East Main Street.
Second.
Comments or questions? All in the air?
I'll just comment. This is one of our local businesses and this council, the mayor, we try to be very friendly with all the businesses and wherever alcohol is possible, we work with them. This just is a situation that just is not conducive with the sidewalk in front of their place. So, you know, again, nothing personal, we want to work with our businesses, it's just not feasible with the way it's set up.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Dampco, please.
Motion to award contract B of the 2012 Sewer Repair Project to JMF Underground in the amount of $156,575.
Second.
Comments or questions?
I guess the only comment, because it's sewer repair, this money does not come out of the general fund, it comes out of the sewage account.
Any other comments? Roll call, please, chief. Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
President of the loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to award the 2012 Contract A demolition project to KBS Demolition in the amount of $57,000. And I would just like to read which ones those are. These are the places that are going to be demoed this year.
I get a second, first?
409 Second Avenue, 316 Academy Avenue, 902 Chartiers Avenue, 539 Bokeh Avenue, 652 Dow Avenue, 655 Covetch Avenue, 251 Reamer Avenue, and 403 West Main Street.
Does anyone have any comments or questions they'd like to ask regarding this list of properties to be razed?
Could you repeat that again? Pardon? Could you repeat those again?
409 Second Avenue, 316 Academy Avenue, 902 Chartiers Avenue, 539 Bokeh Avenue, 652 Dow Avenue, 655 Covetch Avenue, 251 Reamer Avenue, and 403 West Main Street.
Normally each year we have a couple of properties that we schedule for demolition. This year, we decided to increase that number dramatically. We set aside funds to do that and rather than have these properties sit indefinitely, and some of them have sat for a very long time, empty, dilapidated. We're taking some significant action this year to clean up some of those properties.
Mr. President, if I could point out, this project was made possible through the refund, through the bond issue.
Exactly right. Any other comments? Roll call, please. Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
President of the loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to ratify the March 30th, 2012 action of council based upon the recommendation of the Borough Engineer declaring that the risk of injury to the general public caused by the dilapidated condition of the vacant structure at 307 Center constituted an emergency and authorizing the Borough Engineer to solicit bids for the demolition of the structure.
Second. If I could just put it on the record in explanation what's going on here. The House of 307 Center Avenue was already going to be demolished with that list of properties that Ms. the Councilwoman Dampco just read from. It became apparent at the Borough Engineer that it was an immediate risk of injury, so council had to gather, approve the demolition and approve the contract. What we're doing here with this mo- motion, property's already down from what I understand. It is just in the interest of transparency placing this out for our vote to ratify what has already been done. Chief, has that property been razed? Any other questions or comments regarding 307 Center Avenue? Roll call, please. Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to ratify the award of the contract in the amount of...
We just did that one.
Pardon?
We just did that one.
No. This is the contract.
B.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Excepted.
I know, yes.
Motion to ratify the award of the contract in the amount of $4,800 to A.W. McNabb Demolition for the demolition of 307 Center Avenue following the declaration of an emergency.
Second.
Comments or questions? Roll call, please. Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
President of the loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to permit the Seventh Avenue Basketball League to utilize the Seventh Avenue Basketball Courts every Saturday and Sunday from June 2nd through September 30th, 2012, from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to permit the Grenadian Flag Football League to utilize the All-Purpose Field at Carnegie Park every Sunday from May 27th through July 1st, 2012, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Comment. Unless you've gone to the East Flag Football Games, I mean, this is a really, really great thing for our community. I mean, the kids come from all over, the NFL recognizes it, it's fantastic. You know, I never realized just, you know, what it was until I went and it's amazing that there's people to come and watch and the intensity the kids play with, so it's great to have this in our community. And, you know, Lou does a great job with Boys and Girls Club and getting their score in every year, so, you know, I think he needs to be applauded for his efforts.
I've seen a couple of these games, I agree with Councilman Sarsfield. I thought I was going just to see a little game. These kids are dead serious, you'd think they played for the Steelers. I mean, it's like, you're tense in the stands.
Any other questions or comments?
This is the men's league, the Boys and Girls Club leaves in the fall.
Right.
Leaves in the fall. But you're right about the boys' club, it's a tremendous league. And they, this is just a men's league that plays on the...
So, these are adults.
Right.
Heck with them, then, don't worry.
They need the extra money.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to award the Phase 1 Carnegie Park improvements rebid to Miguel Roy paving with base amount of $153,510 and 7 cents, and alternates 1A, 2A, 5A, 6A, and 7A totaling $25,938 for a total award amount of $179,448 and 7 cents.
Comments or questions? As some of you know already, our Public Works, a group, has already taken down the old playground equipment at the park. Some of the kids have commented on its app and this is the first step to getting these improvements in place for the park, including new playground equipment. If there are no further questions, roll call, please, chief. Councilwoman Kobe.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the loss.
Yes.
Motion passes. Public safety motions, Councilman Sarsfield, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion A is a motion to adopt ordinance 2374, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, amended in Chapter 15 of the Borough Code of Ordinances relating to the parking of commercial vehicles in the Borough and permanently extending Borough Ordinance 2361 as amended.
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
We need a second, first on this one? Second. Sue's seconded, okay, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to amend, I would like to amend it to remove the clause that prohibits trailers from parking on the street.
Comments on that?
Mr. President, after hearing from a resident last month, we decided that it was in the best interest to remove this because the intent of this ordinance obviously wasn't to impact any of the residents in a negative way or create a hardship in any way, and that's exactly what we're doing tonight, Mr. President.
Any other comments regarding removing the trailer clause out of the ordinance? Can I have a vote, please, then?
Second.
Second on the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment is endorsed and then on the motion, then, the ordinance, to adopt the ordinance without the trailer clause, any other further comments on that? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance is approved, motion carries.
And motion B is a motion to advertise Borough Ordinance Number 2375, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie terminating the Carnegie Parking Authority.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I'll comment. Whenever we revisited this and looked, bringing back the Parking Authority, which was disbanded before any of us were on council and speaking to some people, we thought that it would be beneficial, that different grants and different monies would be able to be sought out. But after formulating the committee and them doing some research and studies, it would have balanced and would have made sense. And we then understood why it was disbanded originally when it was, and that's simply what we're doing now is moving forward to disband it.
So, the monies that the Parking Authority would have would go into the...
Stay in possession of the Borough in the same account that it's in right now.
And that was the same thing that was done before this being...
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. President, could you just let everyone know what that fund is? How much is that?
$80,000 approximately.
Thank you.
And there's, there's also property that obviously belongs to the Parking Authority.
Is that deeded to the Parking Authority or to the Borough?
To the Borough.
It's deeded. Currently, it's deeded to the Parking Authority, but we're going to convey it, before the Parking Authority is disbanded, we're going to convey it back to the Borough so that there's no confusion as to who owns the one.
If there's no other questions, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion C is a motion to participate in a 2012 show called Joint Police... Joint Police Test to Formulate an Updated Civil Service Eligibility List.
Second. Comments or questions?
It's just, we just hired 13 officers earlier this year, and it is simply to bring our, our list up to date and make it more current.
And no further questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
D is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2012-08, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie establishing a handicap parking space near 319 Thomas Street.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion E, Motion to Adopt Resolution Number 2012-09, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie establishing a handicap parking space near 516 Seventh Avenue.
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Community Development, Councilman Varys, please.
Motion A to appoint Councilwoman Demko as a Carnegie Borough elected official to the Three Rivers Wet Weather Elected Official Basin Group.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion B to appoint Councilman Sarsfield as a Carnegie Borough elected official alternate to the Three Rivers Wet Weather Elected Official Basin Group.
Second.
Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion C to advertise the sale of Borough property located at 415 and 417 Elk Avenue to the highest bidder with a minimum selling price of $17,500.
And just, as a comment, on your motions that you have in your hand, you'll see the price of $15,000, we discussed it as a council, and that's why the price is different than what you're seeing if you have a copy of the agenda.
I have a second, please.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
This piece of property is an empty lot, it's actually two empty lots that are next to the old Elks Club on Elk Avenue, and the owner of the Elks Club has expressed interest in purchasing that for, a parking lot for his building, and to do that, we need to post that for public sale so that anyone else would have the opportunity also to purchase
There's no further comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion D to advertise Borough, excuse me, Borough Ordinance Number 2376, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, amending Number 2352, establishing a Shade Tree Commission.
Second.
Comments?
Motion, I can make a motion to table, Mr. President.
Motion to table, there's a second?
Second.
Comments?
There's still some, there's still some clarification that we need to get in the ordinance that our solicitor's working on, so we hope to have it amended and changed for next month.
Any other comments? There's a motion to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is table. Community reports, Councilman Katina, please.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I'll keep it short and sweet. Revenue to expenditures so far this year, we're running $325,000 roughly to the better at this point. I say this every month, but we're only four months basically into the year, currently we're into the fifth month now, but that doesn't make or break the year, we obviously need to monitor our expenditures closely over the next few months until tax revenues from real estate taxes start rolling in approximately in late July, early August. Right now, there's about a balance of about $800,000 in our general fund, and that's typically where we're at at this point in the year, there's no surprises at this point in so far the year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Code Enforcement, Councilwoman Kobe, please.
We have nothing to report on code enforcement.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilwoman Demko. Public Safety, Councilman Sarsfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just updating the residents in the areas of Cooks Lane and Flag Court, Branch Street and Dick Street, Morrow and Morrow Avenue, they were targeted areas for stop sign enforcement. Our officers went out and diligently and worked hard and were very successful, getting citations for people disobeying those stop signs, and I want to applaud each and every officer that worked on that target area. We also, we received our new SUV vehicle, it's waiting to be marked up and lights put on, and I'm excited that if we get snow this year, we'll have a vehicle to get around to. So, you know, that's, that's a good thing. I also want to thank our police officers and every surrounding agencies, and I hope not to miss anybody, but Heidelberg, Greenwich, Bridgeville, Oakdale, long way to come, but Scott Township, Castle Shannon, and also the Allegheny County Police for the support that they provided us with on the day of the shooting at 8:20 Capitol Drive. And I also want to send a message out to suspect shooter Rashad Watson. He will continue to be sought out through the Sheriff's Department, through the Allegheny County Police, they continue to seek him out, and he will be brought to justice. And I want to say to the mother of the small child who was victimized in this incident that there's not been a day that has passed by since the occurrence of this incident that I've not remembered her and her child in my prayers, and I hope that God will continue to touch over her and her child. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Community Development, Councilman Varys?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to tell everybody, myself and Mike Sarsfield, Councilman Sarsfield, went up to Presley Heights about a week ago, the new development up on top of Cuppage Hill. And the reason why we went up was, I caught a mailer in the mail showing that they have single units as well as townhouses up there. So we went up to take a look, and it's very nice, I was really surprised the way they manicured the ground, the way that the buildings are going up, it's very plain looking, and the view, the view up there is extraordinary. So we were up there just to take a look, and if you get a chance, you might want to go up there. The next thing is, last summer and fall, PA American Water decided to put new pipes and lines in a lot of streets here in Carnegie, and after they were done, they left very bad, a very bad situation with the paving where there were holes, or it had sunk about anywhere up to a foot, where when you run your car across it, it was very dangerous. So one of our council persons here, Mr. Sarsfield, decided to look up the ordinance to find out what can be done about this because we can't have that, they didn't bring the street back to where it was before they started digging. So I'll let him explain a little bit more about it, but if you look at Center Street, all the cross streets up there, up on Reamer, Third Avenue, Third Street, they did all these new streets, it probably, I would estimate a cost of probably a million dollars to fix what they fixed for us, and I just want to thank Councilman Sarsfield for having the initiative to go after, to look at the ordinance, ordinance and get something done about it. Mike, you want to highlight anything?
Yes, thank you, boy. Yeah, I mean, I was being directly affected, obviously, but roads, since I've been on this council, roads are very costly, and that was another reason why we did the bond this year, so we could do more roads. However, Third Avenue, Reamer, these roads were not in, in bad condition, however, with as many holes and digging that they did, even with the replacement patch they put on, there were still cracks in the road that I could see were going to end up turning into serious deterioration. So we contacted the water company, and they did come to a meeting, we had a lengthy discussion, and it resulted in them going out and making us wholeness. So I want to thank them for their, their cooperation and a job well done, and that, you know, our community is, you know, where it should be. Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman Varys?
No, that's all. From my comments this evening, I would like to talk about two different organizations in the Borough that we've been working with over the past months to try to improve our relationship or try to improve their functionality, I would like to look at it. One of them is the Fire Department, and we met again last Thursday for a lengthy session discussing the ordinance, proposed ordinance for the Fire Department. And although it started off rough, the, the meeting ended up, we would say fairly productive. That meeting was Councilman Varys and Councilman Sarsfield, myself, along with our solicitor, and the members from the Fire Department, the officers of the Fire Department, and their I remain optimistic regarding the Fire Department. We, we've had a very difficult relationship over the last five years or so, maybe longer some would say, but they have been working to improve their operation, and because of that, I've always been optimistic that we would get to a resolution. They started showing signs of improvement last December, they started conducting their monthly business meetings in a more formal fashion, and they started to make improvements in their organization operation, which I'm hopeful is going to lead to a secure future for them and a secure relationship between us and them. I can't tell you any details, of course, because those discussions are still ongoing, but I'm hopeful, and I'm seeing good signs that things are improving with the Fire Department. The other organization which we are dealing with is the library, and I can't report a lot of progress with the library at this point. We've had a couple of meetings in recent months which have been somewhat contentious and have not yielded much in the way of changes or what we would consider from council's perspective to be improvements. Back in March, council highlighted some concerns that we had, those two concerns we've reiterated many times, one was concern of loss of key personnel at the library, and the other was a financial situation at the library. We had, in the first quarter of the year, the library running in the red at the tune of about $150,000, and this is obviously not a situation that can continue. I mean, anybody who deals with budgets understands that you cannot continue running in the red indefinitely, and this put off alarms for us, and we are concerned about it, we continue to be concerned about it. Now that was back in mid-March. I do not know personally right now what the financial situation is at the library, I don't have any report at the moment. We do have another library meeting coming up in the end of this month, and the board may be providing more financial information at that time. But these two concerns continue to be with us, and we are concerned as we go into the summer months that this financial situation could result in reduction of services at the library, and we would not want to see that, obviously. We don't think that the, the patrons of the library should be penalized for this, and we hope that the library board will work diligently to solve these problems. We're certainly willing to work with the library board in any way that we can to help resolve these matters, but they continue to be a concern for us. And so I'm hopeful that while we're seeing improvements, great improvements in the Fire Department, we'll also see improvements in the library soon, and that we'll be able to have two healthy organizations that will help be partners with the Borough once and once in years ahead.
Mr. President, I don't know if Ms. Woolley's here, I don't know if at some point she wishes to come up and address council or...
Well, I would like to say...
If you could come up to the microphone, please.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity, although I, I think it was kind of productive, if the concern is financial, to cut the funding for the library from the council's point of view. And secondly, we are moving forward, we had a complete vote of confidence from Nevillewood Neighbors for blanket funding for their charity, and we also received a large grant from PNC recently, and as far as being in the red in January, that's, that's typical of any organization, it's a nonprofit that receives their funding in intervals during the year. So I am disappointed that we have not been able to resolve the differences, but our library and music hall is going forward confidently, and we're making great progress in terms of new funders and new programs. So, and I, I would love to resolve this because I do believe that the public is really the victim here because the, the two personnel leaving was, first of all, one person resigned on her own, and, and clearly, you know, this is America, we all have differences in workplace at some point, and we would have liked her to stay, and as far as funding is being jeopardized, it's actually risen.
Thank you. The, I'm glad to hear that the funding is improving at the library, certainly we are glad to hear that because we were concerned about service cuts during the summer, and if, if what you're saying is true, then, then that's good news for us. So your situation, your financial stability is stable then, would you say at this point?
Well, I, I, you know, like any business, we're moving forward and doing our work and working hard and getting positive results, the benefit is taking shape, we have three significant sponsors, and we're having a committee benefit party on May 21st at Papa Jays, and we have about 30 people attending that, and their, their job primarily is to promote the benefit. We're having a battle with the bands, that's a fundraiser in June. We're starting a new literacy program, Science for You, for school readiness.
So you, you would characterize your, your financial stability as, as being fine at this point?
Yeah, I would, absolutely, and I'm, I'm very much aware of it. I'm very disappointed, though, that as opposed to having productive discussions, that the public is hurt by the $30,000 fund, funding cut by the Borough, I thought that was unnecessary.
Well, hopefully then, at the, the meeting that's coming up, at the end of the month, we'll be reassured and...
Well, if there's any yelling, it's going to be shut down by me because that was inappropriate last time, unlike the public, I thought that was not professional.
Well, the, as far as the concern about, the, the concerns that the council has... the concerns that the council has, if we could have those addressed, then we're ready to turn the money back on. I mean, really, we are. I haven't heard anything from the leadership of the board that our concerns are ameliorated or unfounded. So hopefully, maybe at this next meeting, we'll get that.
And Ms. Woolley, just to point out, the board never approached us about cutting that funding or suspending it even. They raised no issue with that. Not that I, not that- Mr. President, I don't know if they spoke to you. They certainly haven't spoken to me.
And I mean, it wasn't even raised at the meetings. I mean, when we were at the meetings, nobody said, "Where's our money?"
Well, it was voted upon before it was ever discussed. But I think that that's history at this point. I just was very disappointed. I thought it was an unprofessional meeting last time, and I didn't think it was productive at all. And I wasn't even sure what the demands were at that meeting, considering that the borough called. But I'm not here to get into that. I'm here to progress and report positive funding.
Thank you. Moving forward, I don't think any programs will be cut then.
I don't know. You know, when you decide to cut a budget $30,000 and it's a nonprofit, of course, that's going to have an impact. And I am saying that we have secured foundation funding. And we have several proposals being decided upon in June. So as far as funding is moving forward, it's absolutely moving forward. But I think that, you know, in any budget, even a household budget, if you cut it $30,000, you're going to have ramifications. So it's unrealistic to think that that didn't have an impact. And I was surprised that that happened with that discussion.
Well, that would be over in a year's time, though. I think we're talking about $2,500 a month.
Right. $2,500 is half the Math for You program. It's a definite, significant amount of money to our patrons.
I understand that. And when we raised the issue back in March, of course, we were still providing that monthly stipend to the library. And of the $150,000 that the library was in the red for the first quarter, only about $2,000 of that was from the library. So the library itself, when we look at the library as a separate piece from the whole institution, the library itself is not really in a serious financial situation. Am I right on that? I mean, of the $150,000 in the red, the vast-
First of all, the $150,000 in the red is the projected budget. And that was to be funded throughout the year. It's the same as what you said about the real estate taxes coming in. What is it, August?
No, that was the P and L. I mean, that was the P and L that we were provided at the annual meeting for the first quarter.
Right, but the budget provided for income stream throughout the year. And secondly, you know, any deficit is a result of the personnel that you're fighting for now.
I don't exactly understand that. But maybe what you're saying is that the P and L that we received at the annual meeting was not correct because it showed $127,000 in spending for capital improvements in the first quarter.
Right, and every capital improvement has been accounted for and paid for. We are completely up to date on capital spending.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Fire Department report. There's no one here from the Fire Department, I don't think, this evening. Is there anybody sitting back there?
No.
Okay. There is a meeting of the Fire Department tomorrow evening, and two of our council members will be in attendance. Mayor, report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Criminal arrests and citations were 37 this month. Traffic citations were 70. Parking tickets, 118. Complaints of self-initiated activity were 954. As we all know, we had an incident on Saturday, April 14th, that was pretty dangerous for our community, not only for the residents that live in the building but for residents around the building. Right now, I can report that all shooting victims are alive. We do have a warrant out for the one arrest, as Councilman Sarstil said before. At this point, we still have not been able to catch up with him. The last I had heard, the motive for the shooting seems to be a long-running feud between two individuals. The shooter is somebody in the car. Now, here's some facts. We have, the documented crime and disorder at Carnegie Towers has decreased since the new ownership. The enhanced video system by the new owner was instrumental in helping the police identify the shooter. The current sign-in procedure that they have in place was instrumental in helping identify the shooter. The on-duty security guard also did an excellent job. He seemed very competent, was very cooperative. While all that has been said, and serious crime has dropped considerably at this facility, it is very little consolation to the neighbors and to the residents of the towers who experienced what I consider may be the most dangerous event at the towers since I've lived here for 17 years, 18 years, excuse me. While this event was extremely horrible, I am actually grateful that it wasn't worse because it was in the middle of the day. And it was also that, it was also the fact that the kids were usually playing in the parking lots. And residents could have been out and around, but the rain helped keep people inside. And while the security cameras in the sign-in process proved effective in identifying the shooter, there is still a major issue of preventing guests from using this place for crime. I'm not sure if that problem is solvable with the way the facility is at this time. Nonetheless, I think that we need to keep trying to solve that problem. The true underlying issue, though, unfortunately, is that this public housing model is obsolete. It does not work. It does not work for the residents. It does not work for the neighbors, for the neighborhood that this is in. And what really burns me up and just makes me extremely upset is that our government continues to force certain communities, not every community, just certain communities, to participate in a failed model. To me, that's grounds for serious concerns. And I think when we have our meeting coming up, we are definitely going to sit down and talk about that and see if there's any possible way that we can address that. Immediately after this session, I scheduled a meeting with the district attorney, Stephen DePaola. And we went down there, and we met with Mr. DePaola, and it was a very productive meeting. One thing I will say about Mr. DePaola, he's very supportive in these type of situations. And I think he is willing to support us on a number of initiatives. Not going to go over all those initiatives right now. We have an executive session scheduled for the 17th. Unfortunately, it is an executive session. And during that executive session, we will talk about some legal, any, not some legal, but any possible legal action or any possible legal issues that we can address. In the meantime, residents up there probably have noticed that we have definitely increased patrols. We've had a K-9 officer up there a few times. The unfortunate situation about properties like this is that while the security has gotten tighter, what happens is some of the problems filter out actually into the neighborhood, into places in the neighborhood. You know, you have an apartment here, a B200 apartment there, a library, or a couple of them, that people who don't want to be involved with that tight security, they move to these, into places close by the facility and cause havoc. So you know, our police department is aware of many of these. If you have others, or if you have some concerns of that nature, once again, report them to the chief. He addresses every and all complaints of that nature. We are very serious about addressing the issues up there. So please stay vigilant as a neighborhood or as residents of the facility. If you know of issues inside or outside, keep us aware of them. We were, weather is breaking. We'll continue to add more foot patrols. We will also reinstitute our bike patrol relatively soon. So hopefully, with all that, and without neglecting any of the other neighborhoods, that we will continue to provide the utmost and professional police service to this community. Change gears a little bit. DARE graduation was last month. And while some of the issues that we handle up there are reactive, when we deal with these young men and women at a young age, we're hoping that that's a proactive initiative. We had excellent essay winners again this year. Bobby Chapman, Sidney Franchek, and Devon Kirkland were all essay winners for the DARE program. And I can't thank Sarge Litt enough for the excellent job that he does with the DARE program. I also would like to thank all the officers and all the responding, as Councilman Sarstil said, all the surrounding, all the responding departments for their help in the event on April 14th. Want to thank the Fire Department and their efforts for helping a man, helped actually rescue a man who drove his car into a creek. Unfortunately, a few days later, the man didn't survive. But they did pull him out alive. The man wasn't coherent at the time. But the Fire Department did an excellent job. Wasn't an easy rescue situation. There were also responding departments that assisted us, so I want to thank them. One of the initiatives of our new multi-municipal comprehensive plan is to utilize Shorty's Creek for recreation. I don't know if you may have seen the ad, but if you haven't, Hush Cantley of Cantley's Bar will be holding their third annual fishing tournament this Saturday. This tournament benefits the Carlington Band. Registration is from 6:30 to 8:30 at the bar, and it's a family event. The cost is $10. That includes donuts and a picnic buffet. So come on out, enjoy some fishing. You can call Hush at 412-4975. Now, that was a full-page ad. His number was on a full-page ad in the Signal Iron, so I can repeat that. Speaking of the library, Stage 62 continues with 12 angry men this weekend. From the reviews that I had from last week from the people that attended the play, everyone said it was an excellent, excellent play. The, what's interesting about this play, it's not in the regular theater. It's in the new studio theater. So the seating is limited, but you can call 429-6262 for seats for that. I do want to thank The Clay Place at Standard for another exhibit, another opening. And that exhibit for the Ohio Potters will be running this month. And they have openings about once every month. So pay attention, and maybe you can catch one of the ceramic pottery openings at Standard, and you'll really enjoy it. So thank you very much. That's all we have today, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, if anyone wants to speak on any subject, this is your time to do it. Leo.
Mr. President, one second. After Leo.
Give me a minute to ask.
After Leo, there's some members of the Shade Tree Commission here that would like to speak about a grant that we recently got and about Planning Day and various other things. So if they're given the opportunity.
Leo, go ahead. You're up.
Sorry about that, Leo.
I've come to speak for Tobacco Road again. I think it's time. And many of you people are on the second run here. And both runs, some of you said to me, you do your utmost in regard to the situation over there. We used to have all Emerald Traxx run up here, and they had an opening for the industrial park, right? Now, I think there won't be one line going up there. And I sit on a porch, and I never see a train going by. And for the life of me, I don't know why they can't open that up. They say they don't know what, they don't have no money. Here a couple weeks ago, the federal government was going to build a high-stay train in California, billions of dollars, on the desert. They put this hole under the river here. Can you imagine what they could have done with all that money around here? All these bridges need repaired. Roads need repaired. People losing their homes. And just like these schools last week, in a paper that says they made a mistake building these schools up nomad's land. They should build them within the community so the kids can walk. See, they create these problems, just like downtown side. You're going to spend a hundred-some-thousand dollars to figure out what the problem is down south side. Now, the chief will back me up in this statement. Years ago, you could start up a superior steel, and by the time you go down there, you'll be drunk. Am I right, chief?
You're right, Leo.
They create these problems. Man, mankind is what caused. We caused, not the federal government, not the state government. Am I right?
Yes, sir.
I bet if they wanted to build a skateboard up in the park, I bet they'd get the money. And we've been after you people since the 1979. Talk about bringing engineers. 1979 isn't close that crossing, and why? You ought to live up to that humor, especially them building their homes up there. Honest to God, I don't believe. And one of these days, somebody's going to get killed up there. It'll be too late.
Well, Leo, me and Councilman, the laws, and discussed it. And just, you know, the shooting that occurred and a bunch of other things. But we have a very good communication with K-Danny Clark through Collier Township. And as we discussed before, Rick, I think maybe we need to, you know, schedule a meeting. Her and maybe another commissioner from Collier can discuss this and see if there's not something that Collier can do to assist us with this ongoing problem.
You know, they have the law to tell people to ride free. Come on, who paid for that 500-some-million dollars for that thing? Free for what? Then they're going to build a walkway there over to the stadium for the poor Dares. And who's not paying for that? We are. Just like the engineer told me before they built that tunnel. He said the federal government's giving us money. I said, "Who's the federal government?" He said, "If we don't, we gotta send them back." Send them back! We ain't even here. Whenever I hear all these people going to the food bank up there, it's enough to make you cry. And I want to thank you all very much, and I hope you all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. You too.
I can mention on the issue of the railroad. You're right, there hasn't been a train on these tracks out here for a long time. Last estimate was four years. There has not been a train on there. And we've approached the railroad about that property. And the reason that there has not been a train on there, of course, those tracks go to the garbage dump out there that's in, between here and Walker's Mill. There's a bridge out down there, right near the garbage dump. There's a bridge that's out. And they have not repaired that bridge, and that is the reason they're not using these tracks. But as I say that, they don't want to give up the tracks either.
Mr. Sir, whenever they, whenever we have all them trains run up and down there, that signs there, "Stop, look, and listen."
Right.
And if you don't want to stop, look, and listen, God help you. It's just like anything else. I come across, before I present tracks, a red light there, right? If I don't stop, God help me. We're going to use common sense. This country better wake up, we're going down to shoot. If the parson, then we ought to build a new stadium for the parson. Maybe they'll win. Hold on, now, if you're firing with you, he's going to leave town. They're going to ruin. You've got a living house 150-some years old. And who helps me? Then you ask people to help, they're all kinds of bananas. Man, I get so angry over this, I believe. Because in my estimation, we caused. No one else, not the federal government, not the state government. They squandered our money. And they had the God go around reassessing the homes. And you're retired. Where are you going to get this money? And I thank you again.
Thank you, Leo. Shade Tree, we have some folks in the Shade Tree who want to talk to us.
Thank you, Bridget. And while Bridget passed that out, I just, every one of the members in the Shade Tree Commission, and I'm proud to start with the passing job, but Bridget really, really, I mean, she worked diligently. And I mean, with the Planning Day being such a success. And I can't thank her enough for everything that she's done a success, and I, I can't thank her enough for everything that she's done for the Shade Tree Commission as of this point. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you. My name is Bridget Van Dorn, I am a volunteer working with the Shade Tree Commission, I'm not on the commission, but I would like to offer my acknowledgement and congratulations to Carnegie Borough Council. On May twelfth, volunteers from the Carnegie Shade Tree Commission, Carnegie Cub Scout, PAC-E thirty-one, and TruFate thirty-one, the Boys and Girls Club, Atwee Islamic Center, and several residents showed up to help with the Planning Day. Planning Day went very well due to the efforts of the Shade Tree Commission and these volunteers. John Ferry of the Shade Tree Commission and his wife Nancy spent several extra hours after planning, watering all of the planters, double-checking planting, and making sure all cleanup was completed before leaving after five PM on Saturday. This planning project was approved and funded by the borough, planned and implemented by the Shade Tree Commission, and already has resulted in a visible improvement to the downtown business district, and has received many positive compliments. I would like to call to your attention that one business on Main Street donated a hundred dollars toward additional plants, and donated a hundred dollars in labor services toward this project. This is just the first donation of what we hope will be many more for the Shade Tree Commission. The relocation of planters utilized a few hours of the Public Works' time during the week of May seventh, and countless hours on the part of the commission members and volunteers to implement the plan. There are still several planters that need to reach their final destinations, and we have a commitment from the Public Works to help us complete the moves over the next two weeks as time permits. The commission would like to thank Mrs. Sudemko and Mr. Hatcher for their help with this portion of the project. Without their involvement, this project could never have been completed. Steve Buter has been most helpful as well, the support of the borough council and staff has certainly helped the recently formed Shade Tree Commission make their first impact on the community, a positive one. We do have one challenge in completing the overall plan. Citizen Bank is still without an extra-large planter. Public Works has determined that they do not have the necessary equipment to move the planter from near Papa Jay's down to Citizen's Bank. We would like to offer a couple options to the borough as to how to get this task completed. The first option is to accept donation of time and the use of necessary equipment needed to move this planter from local businesses at a cost of zero dollars. The second option is to rent the necessary equipment and have the Public Works move the planter. The estimated cost of that is around four hundred dollars. Citizen Bank certainly deserves to have a planter equal to the other banks in town. Currently, they have no planter in front of their building, PNC has two, and Northwest has two. We have learned through the manager at Citizen's Bank that they would be delighted to have one at their location. There is a possibility of a few planters being available for businesses on West Main, for businesses from West Main that may express an interest in having their own planter. We're currently taking a final inventory and putting together a list of businesses who have already requested planters, working to fulfill those requests on a first-pump-for-serve basis. Again, we are requesting of all council and Public Works members that the planters not be moved. Please, don't move them. The exception only being in the case of public safety. As you view the newly positioned, new positions of the planters, you should notice that there is a balance and a flow that's been created. This has been a huge undertaking to bring these planters back to this kind of a design, and we certainly would like to see it work and stay where they are. The few exceptions will be for, we do have a couple extras that can be utilized possibly elsewhere to fulfill the need, but we're begging that no one moves the planters without talking to us. If there are any questions or comments regarding the planters or requests for planters, please refer them to the Shade Tree Commission so we may address them properly and to utilize the spares and not just pull them out of the center of the design.
Thank you.
In closing, we'd like to briefly provide a survey of the recent planters moved.
Bridget, if I could ask, did you not go through these individual businesses, it looks like there's some kind of personal comments in there, maybe wouldn't be appropriate?
No, I think they would all be appropriate. But you're welcome to read them, and the most important thing is that it does express the need for communication, that's our number one thing. The results have been positive, there were, as I told Mike, we really only ran into one person who was upset with the Planning Day, which is pretty good for a whole day's work, 'cause you can't please everybody all the time, as much as we might try. So, I think that all of the issues have been resolved at this point, we do have some that are, have asked to go ahead and move it. If you have heard, I know you guys hear a lot more than we might hear, if you've heard of any problems, please let us know. You'll note I direct your attention to the TANU, there was definitely miscommunication there and misunderstanding that created conflict that didn't need to be, okay? And by communicating, we are certain that we can take care of any concerns, certainly would like to see more planters in the future of the borough, and be able to make that happen, but only by getting that list together, using the inventory that we have, and then building the list for future inventory, can we coordinate that and make it happen, okay? The majority of businesses and the comments have been very positive and very comforting. We're still working to find businesses, organizations, and residents to adopt the planters, and the moment they're finally all in place, which will happen in the next two weeks, then the members of the Shade Tree Commission will be visiting all of the businesses that we have talked to already or haven't heard from, to ask for assistance with maintaining their planters. There will be information on the website, we'll provide that to Stephen for how to adopt a planter, so for organizations or regular people who just would like one, to take care of one, not in their yard. And then, in addition to this success, the Shade Tree, Shade Tree Commission applied for and received approval for a grant from the Pennsylvania Water Company to build a rain garden next to the Historical Society. More information on this will be coming very soon, this is a six-thousand-dollar grant that, we're not sure when they're awarding it, but it has been approved and check presentation is yet to be scheduled, okay? So we wanna thank everyone for their support, and we look forward to the continued success of the program. Our focus on this particular project was planters and bringing, arranging and coordinating the greenery. The next phase moves more into tree trimming, tree maintenance, and bringing trees into town. So we have applied for a grant from Tree Vitalize to bring twenty-five new trees to town this year, each year that number goes up, so once you've applied and showed that you can do it, they'll give even more, so that's our focus. Any questions about any of that information?
I just have one. Supposedly, there was, between...
Debbie Gates.
Debbie Gates and the old post office, there's a planter that's pushed back and wheelchairs can't get by it.
It's a...
The motorized wheelchairs.
It's a low wood, Bridget, and it's real big, and it's got a big fuzzy plant in it, and Sue got calls, and I got calls, and I went down, and I can barely get the scooter through it, and the scooter's slender compared to power chairs that are three hundred, three-hundred-fifty pounds, and...
A, a big low wood?
It's a low one, and it's huge, and it's got this big fluffy bush in it, so that's, you know...
By where?
Between Debbie Gates and the old post office. When you look down the street, it goes like this, planter, 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 planter.
Is it by, is it by the clock?
No, it's not near the clock.
Well, we will definitely take a look and figure out which one it is, because we were who's the one by Debbie Gates for...
Right, but it was a higher one, it was a higher one, it was a...
Okay, I will definitely take a look and see...
It's one of the real slow. And, um, a couple questions, if, you know, four hundred dollars, what do they cost if I move?
The planter?
If Citizen's Bank needs one, yeah.
Or like twelve hundred dollars.
Oh, are they?
I don't know.
And then you said we have some extra, extra...
We don't have any of that size, there are only eight of the great big ones, and there are three, well, four, right down at that Papa Jay's intersection, we're not really sure how that happened originally, nobody knows how they originally arrived, we're considering alien possibility, but the, actually, moving one of the three that's on the Debbie Gates side there, seems to be a very reasonable option, the challenge is how you put it.
And finally, because if I have to get one myself, buy one myself, I'll make good on this, if you're looking for people to adopt them, especially when I asked you not to, why was the one moved from Alpro Painters?
Alpro Painters had, well, had, they had about, they had five or six in that little parklot.
I was over there, and I heard there's none, and they had the one that, when Mike was alive, took care of it, and we even said tonight, it was beautiful, it always had seasonal flowers in it, and when Mike passed away, suddenly his family came to us and said, could they please keep that up? They've never painted it, they've never put signs in it, they've never made any demands on us, and they're a business owner, in fact, now, they own two businesses, and their second business, I'm sure you know that they bought, everyone in town's hearing about this, that that was taken from them, and I mean, they are very upset, you know, well...
Bridget, I wonder if I might respond to this?
Sure, go ahead.
As part of the original care organization that brought in a grant to Carnegie and repaved the sidewalks and lighting and the landscape of planter project, none of these planters originally were...